Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, May 20, 2019, and this is a regular Moscow City Council meeting. Brandy?
Welcome, everyone. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brandy. Now I will do the proclamation for Memorial Day. Memorial Day proclamation, ladies and gentlemen. Whereas Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, is a day of remembrance for those who died in their nation's service; and whereas Memorial Day was initially proclaimed on May 5, 1868, by General John Logan, National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic, in his General Order Number 11; and whereas Memorial Day was first observed May 30, 1868, when flowers were placed on the graves of the Union and Confederate soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery; and whereas our predecessors fought in wars so that future generations would have freedom; and whereas they helped shape society we know today, including our political, economic, military, social systems, advancements in science and technology, and cultural traditions that enrich our heritage; and whereas it is important on Memorial Day to reflect on whole life memories of military personnel who have fought and died for our country, to preserve the rights guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution, and to keep our nation strong; and whereas Memorial Day gives us the opportunity to renew our patriotism and to articulate our common desire to live in freedom and seek peace, or our nation's veterans will not have died in vain. Now therefore, I, Mayor Lambert, the mayor of the city of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby recognize May 27, 2019, as Memorial Day, and a city that urges all citizens to honor those who have died in the service of our country. Okay, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Gary, would you tell us what we had a little snafu with our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. We've asked, asking the council to amend the agenda. We had, as we were, our current agenda management software, Civic Clerk, we ran into a glitch. We updated the agenda, and when it was published, the previous version was the one that was published, did not include an agenda item for the lot division, which you see is currently under Consent Agenda Item C. And this was considered by council committee and was approved to be put on the consent agenda. So we're asking that the council approve the amended agenda to include that item for the good faith reason that it was a result of a technical glitch, and that the applicants for Lot Division anticipated that it would be considered tonight. So the backup was already in your packets from the original. It just had, was omitted from the agenda itself.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion from somebody on council?
I would move the approval of the consent agenda with the amendments as stated for Item C.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Art and a second by Gina to approve the amended agenda, which would include Item C. I will start to roll with Catherine.
Aye.
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 Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda itself.
I would move to approve the consent agenda that's remaining as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jim and a second by Catherine to approve the consent agenda as it is stated with the amended motion. I'll start to roll with Ann.
Aye.
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 Okay, very good. We will move on then, folks, to our next order of business, which is staff recognition. Gary, do you have anything for us tonight, sir?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, Gary doesn't have anything, but I certainly do. Ladies and gentlemen, I love it when I get a chance to talk about stuff like this, because I don't get a chance to do this very often. And this is in support, I've got an award that's in support of the leadership of the Moscow Chamber of Commerce. This award was given on May the 9th, and the award goes to our very own Gary Redner, who is our city supervisor for his leadership role in with the Moscow Chamber of Commerce, and his leadership role in the leadership that takes place within that chamber. So with that, I would like to present you, Gary, with this award. Who's got the camera?
You have to take a selfie.
Okay, let me get a good shot. Gary and I are probably the weakest at doing that sort of thing, so we made sure Kayla could do her part.
Thank you very much.
So, Gary, if you'd like to, this is on May the 9th. Do you have a few words?
In light of the light agenda, I'll only speak for a half hour or so. No, this award was given by the Leadership Moscow group of the Moscow Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank that group for recognizing, I believe Mayor Lambert received one of these last year. Leadership Moscow class has been instrumental. We've had several city employees go through that class, and it's been just a great way to integrate new employees into the fabric of Moscow, going to the different governments, finding out about business, so on and so forth. So, and some of you have even presented to Leadership Moscow in the past. It's a great program. We intend to continue to use it and take advantage of it as long as the chamber continues to put it on. So with that, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
One of the things I will say about the Leadership Moscow that the chamber's put on, this was the third year, and each one of these years has been, it just gets a little better and a little better and more refined. Very impressive presentations, and so I was pretty intrigued by that, because I spent the entire time with it during, I got a chance to address the group, to start their session, but also to see the end results was amazing to me. So that's something that's a big deal for our community. So hats off, Jenny Ford, out there, and others. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to mayor's appointments, and I have two that I'd like council to consider, take under consideration. I have a high school non-voting seat for Human Rights Commission, and that is definitely useful, and the expiration would be 12/31/2019. And Arts Commission, Erin Johnson, expiration 12/31/2021. So with that, I entertain a motion from council to approve.
I'd move to approve those two appointments to commission?
A second.
Motion by Jim and a second by Brandy to approve these two names that I mentioned. I'll start to roll with Catherine.
Yeah, aye.
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 Do we have anybody, is either one of those folks here with us this evening? I always like to see if we can get the commissions, because it's a big deal for us, especially high school kids. I love high school kids getting a chance to represent us here in our town and stuff. So I always like to give people a chance to talk and tell our appreciation for volunteer for commission work, because it's a big deal for all of us here in Moscow. Okay, with that, I'll go on to item number four, which is public comment, mayor's response period. We have a period of time we set aside for each council meeting for those that want to get up and address this, as long as it's something that is not on tonight's agenda or something that is in front of the Board of Adjustment or Planning and zoning. Please come up and state your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lily, Moscow. So here's hoping the bond passes strong tomorrow. It's absolutely needed, and we're in a prime position for to get the best bang for our buck. I want to thank many staff and y'all for the hours that you've put in in news articles and the water bill insert and pamphlets and talking at the farmer's market and a whole bunch of places, and responding to issues that have been raised in the letters to the editor, and answering the tough questions that people ask. You've been transparent and thorough in presenting facts. I've been here in meetings during early conversations about a future bond. The list of needs that could go on it was long, but you were going to limit that. The city has successfully found grants and stretched funds to cover some of those projects. So that allows the bond to focus on the police station and refurbish the old building and a little bit on the man billing, and that was no small feat. As to making the new police station as green as feasible, you've heard us say that we want that and solar, or at least to get it set up so that we can get that done in the future, near future. An example might be Moscow Affordable Housing Trust, their project off of Southview. They can't afford to put the solar panels on, but they are making the structures solar-ready, and they've invested in some green installations. As a city, we should be able to match that and even exceed it for such an opportunity as the new police station. You know that there's a bunch of us who are going to keep reminding you to go green wherever we can, and I think you'll give it a good go. Last but not least, I want to commend the Moscow Police Department for years and years of donating personal time and labor to creatively adding workspace where there wasn't any. And I think if they want to add any more equipment, the only thing they can do now is put hooks on the ceiling and hang things from it and duck around underneath them in order to use the rooms. As a pedestrian, I am alert to crossing the alleys that they have to weave through, and I've seen delivery trucks block them. The new station will attract officers, even at a lower pay. If you give them a well-functioning building and a good site, once they get to know our town, I think many of them will choose to stay in Moscow, make Moscow the home they love and protect. So I want to thank you for diligently supporting them and our safety through this bond process.
Thank you, Victoria. I don't know if anybody could say it any better than that. So I will just go, anybody else want to get up and comment? We'd love to hear from you. Anybody else on any other matter they'd like to bring forward and chat with us about? And it is pretty important, and I'm going to plan on putting a few plugs in as we go along this evening, Victoria and myself, so as I can, because this is very important for us. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go on to item number five, consideration of city Moscow mayor and city council salary adjustments. Gary Redner, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have, is that supposed to go up there or not? What we have before you tonight is something that comes up every two years. Idaho code and Moscow city code both state that elected official salary, those of the mayor and council, can only be adjusted every two years. And they can be adjusted in several circumstances, but they have to be done along a certain timeline, six months before the adjustments take place. Our councils have always interpreted that to be that they do it six months whenever possible before a municipal election, so if somebody is deciding to run and want to make sure that they know what the pay is going to be, not that anybody does the job for the pay. And according to our ordinance, it will be adjusted every two years by the CPI, which was given to city employees the previous two years. So the CPI in 2017 was .12 percent, so that's .12 percent, not 1.2 percent, and in 2018 was 1.3 percent. So the document that you have in front of you has those adjustments in there. It's not much of an increase, but it is one that's according to the code. So I'd stand for any questions.
Questions for Gary?
I have a question. When was the code established?
There we go.
I'm not really sure. I know that, yeah. It's been that way since I've been, and I've been here for 28 years. Sorry, I could look it up quickly.
That just gives me a rough idea. It wasn't in the last?
No.
No, it has not been recently.
Ten years or something?
No.
And of course, any change that the council approves will not become effective until the new council is seated in January.
And this was on administrative committee on May 13th, and I don't, and I was at that meeting. You want to address that, Brandy, or was it Jim? I guess it was you.
And, yeah.
Gina.
Okay. What did, I mean, what kind of comments? I know you guys talked a little bit about it, but it seemed like it just for it on the rest of the council to consider?
It was pretty straightforward that it's just the code, and we felt it should be on regular agenda, just.
One thing I'll say, for those out there in TV land, what that means is this, folks, over two years, after two years, the mayor's pay would go from $2,007 to $2,028.50, a whopping 21 bucks. And city council go from $695.84 to $703.28, a little less than $8. And so for those of you out there, I just thought I'd throw that out there so you'd know. Complete transparency, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move we approve the attached ordinance making salary adjustments for mayor and city council effective January 1 of 2020.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Gina and a second by Art to approve the attached ordinance making salary adjustments for the mayor and the city council effective January 1, 2020. Start to roll with Ann.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Gary. Now we will move on to item number six, which is authorization for Parks and Rec Director to administratively approve annual Moscow charter school request for HERC rental fee waiver. Dwight, you're with us. Sir, you've got the podium.
All right, well, good evening. So staff's seeking authorization for the Parks and Rec Director, me, to administratively approve the annual Moscow charter school request for a rental fee waiver that they request each year for the HERC. And right now, I mean, they use half, yes, sir.
Could I stop you for one second, because I made a mistake? I did not read the ordinance that we just passed.
You're right, I'm sorry.
So probably, excuse me, we'll start over here again, so keep those thoughts in mind, and I'll have you rehash them here in a second, but we got an ordinance that I have to read, and it's, Kaylee, it's 2019-03, and that ordinance is an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 8 of the Moscow city code, providing for the increases in salaries of city elective officers, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of passage, approval, and publication according to law. Now with that, Dwight, you can go on.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
In the, seeing as how that I've screwed up this agenda about as bad as it can be, forgot to insert language that the motions should include that it be passed under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and then it be read by title and published by summary.
Okay, well, the maker of the motion, which was Gina, and the second was Art, would you, would you like to?
Repeat after me, please.
Just say, "So moved."
So moved.
So moved. You got a second from Art? Yep. Okay. I'll start to roll with Ann again.
Aye.
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 Ladies and gentlemen, you know what? I got to tell you about, thank you very much, and that passes, and what's really on our minds tonight is this doggone bond. How could we possibly go without talking about the bond? So our apologies, and that has my mind, that's on Gary's mind, and it's on everybody's mind out there this evening. So we're going to talk some more about that as we go along, but without further ado, Dwight, take it off on the HERC for us, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, where was I?
Start over, Dwight, because we forgot what you said to start with.
The school thing, Dwight?
Oh, yeah, I was going to start talking about the bond.
Well, and you want to talk about that, go feel free.
So, well, the Moscow Charter School, every year they request a rental fee waiver of the HERC, and it has become routine, and so to save time, and that's not a lot of energy, but just to save the time, we're requesting authorization for the director to administratively approve this, providing there's no change to the request from the previous year's approved amount. Right now, what you just approved through the consent agenda was eight hours a week. It's not very much. It's actually a reduction of what they typically had. There's been no negative effects on the public use of the facility. Through the resolution that is in your packet, it also requires that the requests go through the Parks and Rec Commission. They give their recommendation for approval before I could give that administrative approval, and the city's programs would still maintain priority as they do now. And that's it. So with that, the proposed action is authorize Parks and Rec Director to administratively approve the annual Moscow Charter School request for the HERC rental fee waiver, provided the requests are for the same or less hours than the previous year's approved request.
Questions for Dwight?
I would move to approve the authorization of the Parks and Rec Director to administratively approve the annual Moscow Charter School request for the HERC rental fee waiver.
Provided?
Yeah, provided the requests are for the same or fewer hours than the previous year's approved request.
Second.
Further discussion? For anyone?
Come on, this is exciting stuff.
Well, Dwight, just savor the moment up there. You got the podium, sir.
Well, I'll say, one thing I had asked you then, and I know the answer, but I'll just say it again, for anyone who didn't happen to tune in to the administrative committee meeting, if there were other requests to use the space that then created some conflict, how is that handled?
Well, that's sort of how it happened. The high school has always used this, and it's just that there was enough time being used between the two that they needed to sit down and work out the schedule themselves of who would get to use it, when, and how much, and that's how we ended up with this time. In the future, should some other organization desire some time, that would cause a conflict, and we would probably just approach it the same way, have everybody sit down, work out a schedule that works, and of course, that stuff would come back through you guys.
Well, okay, with that, we've got a motion by Jim and a second by Art to authorize the Parks and Rec Director to administratively approve annual Moscow charter request for the HERC rental fee waiver, provided the requests are for the same or less hours than the previous year's approved request. I'll start to roll with Ann.
Aye.
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 And I'll abstain, because I work at Moscow Charter School, so like on the administrative committee, I abstain as well.
Okay, so we've got five yeses and one abstention, because Catherine is an employee that, and one thing I will say, they've done this, I don't know how many years, Dwight, now, 10 years? It's been quite a few years.
Just shortly after it opened in 2004.
So quite a, quite a few years, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dwight.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that is, we had a speedy agenda this evening, ladies and gentlemen, and we're going to go into reports, and unusually, usually I pass off reports to start with to council, but I'm going to start the reports off this evening, and I'm going to actually end the reports once we're done, because I'm going to talk about this twice. And what I'm talking about, ladies and gentlemen, is I want to talk about some special thanks. Victoria had mentioned this, but our counselors up here worked very diligently, all of them have been very, very good, and I wanted to give some special recognition to President of our council, Boland, Vice President Sullivan, counselors Art Bedke and Catherine Bonzer, for their help at our police bond table on May 4, 11, and 18. And they weren't necessarily there every single day, but I was there, and we got a chance to engage with our citizens and ask many, many questions, and I was, and we also had a bunch of officers there, and it was, it was with pride that I get a chance to stand up in front of folks and talk to them and tell them the significance of what we're doing, the importance of it, and it's really about, and I hope the folks out there in television land take this to heart, because by golly, we need to get out and vote and move forward, because this is something this community has needed for decades. We don't take it lightly. We work hard. We've got no debt obligation, bond debt in this town. We don't come to the people of the city of Moscow very often and ask for something like this. And if this is a labor of love from the mayor on, or however you want to say it, absolutely, I'm dedicated for this thing. I've worked tirelessly, as well as a number of other people and citizens that have worked in this town as a group called the Safer Moscow have put forward, and we're diligently working hard to strive and make the situation for our town better, something we can be proud of, and infrastructure needs in our community, we need to work on. We don't want to fall behind. We don't want to make it appear that we're catching up, and this is not a council nor a mayor that kicks the can down the road, and some other poor person, as the mayor or the council, has to deal with hard stuff and hard facts. If we need to take it on the chin, and especially me as a mayor, that's just fine, because I'll move us forward with whatever I got to do, and I'll be completely honest about it. Now, is it perfect? Absolutely not, and that's not what we're suggesting. But what we are suggesting is, let's take some pride in this town, let's take some pride in what we're doing. The people sitting up at these podiums up here in this DAS do that every single week, and you could see by the salary increase they got, that they're going to get, that they're dedicated men and women to do this, and they do it for the love of the community and what they're doing. And so with that, please don't take it lightly. And I want to talk about another thing, and this happened on the 18th of May, this is past Saturday, I had a group of young men and women in here called the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council to put on a brunch for our first responders. And these kids, which are juniors and seniors at Logos and our Moscow High, with their advisor and colleague, Brandon Allen, sitting out in the audience, I was very, very proud of what they did. We had 35 people here for that first responders brunch, and I couldn't be more proud of these kids. Man, I'll tell you what, feeling like an old father or grandpa with a bunch of kids, but they took care of business, and they made things happen, and I was very, very proud of them, and we're going to see more of this group of kids, because this is an ongoing thing in Moscow. We need our youth to be able to be vocal and have a point of view. It is very important to me as a mayor, and I think this council up here will agree with that as well, because they've embraced it. Anyway, I'm very proud of that. At that brunch as well, we had Police Officer Caleb Struble, who spoke very eloquently in appreciation of what we were doing, what these kids were doing, and it was very gratifying for me to see a good-looking young officer that I'm very proud of, because he used to work for me when he was 16 years old, and I didn't embarrass him in front of the group, because I told that kid when he was 16, working for me at Safeway, I said, "You know what? You'd make a damn good cop someday." And here he is, one of our officers, a decade later, and that's a true story. You can ask him about this. And so that brings a certain amount of pride in myself as well. Justin Goodwin, who is an employee of this city, and he's a battalion chief for our fire department, one of the battalion chiefs, he was here and he spoke as well. And these are men and women, and we had a bunch of EMTs, we had, like I said, first responders, men and women that are donating their time for something that's very, very serious for our town, and I take pride in that. And every single one of us should take pride in it and thank him every single day, and one of the ways we could do this is by showing up and doing this bond thing right. So ladies and gentlemen, that's what we need to do. And without further ado, I'll pass on to Council President Boland.
I have nothing to report this time, sir. My turn. Three things. Palouse Knowledge Corridor met and discussed the alteration of the way of doing business relative to the Be the Entrepreneur Boot Camp, which is now divided into two halves. First half happens the Friday of Art Walk and Saturday thereafter, and the Saturday thereafter culminates with the Palouse Pitch, which is essentially the elevator pitches that the attendees have developed over the previous two days, and the awarding of the Entrepreneur of the Palouse Awards also going on, so Saturday right after Art Walk. Moscow Arts Commission met and discussed the usual infinity of items that they have before them, but discussing the request for proposals for the public art at the intersection of Sea and Main, the little triangle out here on North Main, and that's progressing well. Some proposals are starting to come in. We're also going to see a little more meet to the Arts Commission annual report, in that they're going to start tracking the number of volunteer hours that is involved with that. And with that, Arts Commission, that is not an insubstantial count of hours that they put in on their own. Urban Renewal Agency met and extended the exclusive negotiation agreement for the Needham people, who are looking to buy two lots out at the Altourist site. They needed a little extra time to put in their development concepts, and so that's going on. Worked to also chip in some money to complete the tree grate installation at the Gritten Project on South Main. Project on South Main down by Eighth Street, and so, have gone through all those things, and generally, people just preparing for future items.
Okay. Ann?
I'm going to start with the one I'm most excited about, which is that the Palouse Space and Aquifer Committee met last week, and they had several tasks they had been working with an engineering firm on, to basically to fill in data gaps for different alternatives. And so, we talked about that information, and then we talked about our upcoming retreat that's happening in June, and basically, what we might want to do with what we've learned, because it makes some of the options more appealing. And so, I am planning on advocating and doing basically sort of like a little presentation walkthrough of some marketing communications strategies I think we could employ, because there's a lot of engineering expertise on that committee, but not maybe so much on the other side, which is kind of where we're at now. And then, I really think that we should look into what it would cost to actually have someone do really strong public involvement and actually contract that out, since we've spent so much money doing the research, coming up with the alternatives. We don't want them to get squashed, because the public doesn't choose one or does not like the one that we choose. So, I think that's a really exciting turning point, because I know they've been looking at that for so long, and hopefully, we'll have some sort of clear direction on how to move that component forward in June. So, that's really exciting. And then, at Pathways, Becky Couch from U of I Parking and Transportation, she talked to us about, so there's a landscape architect student who just graduated with their master's degree, and their master's degree was putting together an extension of the Chipman Trail out to East Street. And so, she'd like to facilitate with Pathways and Transportation a discussion of what that might look like. And so, they might do one, they might have separate ones, but everyone's excited to at least see what she put together, because it was the focus of her degree. So, that, those are my two big ones.
Thank you, Ann. Randy?
Farmers Market met, and they're continuing their plans and discussions for the oral history project, and are looking into having StoryCorps app being one of the ways to start reaching out to people and gathering that oral history of the farmers market over the years. They also are planning their farm visit schedules, which they do every year, and try to hit as many places as they can, and see their operations, and make sure they're all in compliance with the requirements for the vendors. They are continuing discussions about the fee schedule, and I think there was some general agreement that we need to kind of communicate our two bodies, really, with them about, they need to know to plan for the future, what do we as a council, what is our goal as far as our participation, and how do we want to see things, so they have a clear target to be working towards. And, so, we'll see what they ultimately come forward with for us, but that's it for the Farmers Market. Planning and zoning, there were some minor rezones of some areas, I don't want all that detail, but a parcel on South Highway ninety-five in the area of City Impact was rezoned from Ag Forest to Motor Business. There was a lengthy discussion about the draft ordinance amending the educational services in the central business district that we've all been, that we kind of forwarded on to planning and zoning. They have really been taking a more comprehensive look at their entire table, and will be coming forward with some other recommendations, too, not only about the educational services, but some other things that now they're spending a little time with the table, and they can really see some other little adjustments and tweaks that need to happen, and will be prepared to present that to us.
Brandy, question for you.
Yes.
Do you have a sense of, so are they looking at substance change, or like substantive or sort of design layout, use, table use changes, or both?
They're looking at, like, for example, like, specific, specific things. I mean, I can give you an example here, that healthcare services of under two thousand square feet in residential areas would be returned as a permitted use. That's just one example of, I mean, details, things like any particular cell in there, a use, and if it was a conditionally permitted use, or a permitted use, or not a permitted use, some of those, they're recommending changes, too.
Gotcha. So, it's more about the substance of the table, then? Is that Bill, you think you want to say something?
Yeah. Since the adoption of that ordinance, we've had a couple instances, we've run up against uses that probably should have been permitted that were listed as a conditionally permitted use, so the Palouse Empire Gymnastics opened an additional location in the rodeo mall, and because of the educational services, they were actually captured in that category, and we, so they had to go through a CUP process for that particular use that we thought should be allowed by right. We've been keeping track of kind of a few minor tweaks and updates to the table, and we're just going to go ahead and integrate that into this ordinance. So, that'll be going to hearing at their first meeting in June, and then to the council in July.
Great. Thank you both.
Uh, let's see, there's some subdivision code review, more discussion about cluster subdivisions, and proposed common open space requirements there. So, planning and zoning had a very full meeting. That's it for me.
Okay. Gina?
Okay. Last week, I attended the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department meeting, and I guess I got into the mistaken impression that summer, or what we think should be month-wise summer, even though the thermostat doesn't tell us that the same outside, that everything should slow down, and that is indeed not the case. Not only are all the residents home now, meaning that more volunteers, if there are events that happen, get pulled in, but they're also remodeling. So, if you peek your head in there, it looks like a disaster zone right now. We are still in great hands, but they're running around things instead of going down the halls. I, too, went to the URA meeting, and what Art said was very correct. I was awake, too. I missed the Tree Commission meeting last week, because I was gathering public input for my day job. I will attend both the Parks and Rec and the SEDA meeting on Thursday. I will be there in person for one, and I will phone in for another. So, I'll have more of an update next time.
Okay, very good. Catherine?
I attended Fair and Affordable Housing, and they were working on their budget request, and they are wanting to participate in the Health and Wellness Fair, to coordinate, to talk about housing at the Health and Wellness Fair, so they're going to do that. And then, they still are going to do the Fair Housing Training Event, where you do rules for fair housing, you know, talk with property managers and all that. And they used to do it in the spring, but they're moving it to the fall, and they already have a date, and it's September eighteenth at the nineteen twelve center. So, that'll be the Fair Housing Training Event. And we reviewed the impediments, which Bill Belknap had put together on the fly, if anybody can do anything on the fly, two pages of densely packed content, it's Bill Belknap, and it was analysis of impediments, action item, that we went through, and all the different documents that that applied to. And they approved their banner poster, which all the commissions are using now at Farmers Market and other venues that they are, that they go to, to help people know what that commission is, which is neat to see the continuity of those banners for helping people understand where the commissions fit into the city plan. And they'll be at the Farmers Market June first, and then another time in June. So, that's coming up, and I think they have two empty seats that they would like to have filled. They're really looking to fill out what they're doing. So, we had two other people come on, that lady, which I don't remember her name, that came and introduced herself, we approved her. She came, she came and was there, and then, oh, it was Steve Bonner, he's the other member. So, they have two, they just need two more to feel like they're full. And then, I saw that the bridge was going in on Thursday, and so, I took my fourth graders there, thinking we could cross it.
Why?
We didn't get to cross it.
No, they got a few more.
And I didn't cross over the barriers. I didn't, I was a good model, and we went around. We didn't go under the, you know, and across the creek. So, they were excited, though, and hopefully, at some point, we'll be part of the bridge, which would be really cool. And so, that was really fun. And tomorrow, I get to meet with Tim Davis, and hopefully, Stevie, and we're going to be talking about Trex. And because, community-wide, there is super interest in recycling the number two and four plastics. And so, I think we have enough momentum that maybe we can kind of see where the city is thinking about that. So, I'm going to start with the department head and see where that's going.
Good job, Catherine. Gary, before I turn it over to you, I want to thank the staff, the city of Moscow. You know, we got an interesting rule in the state of Idaho when it comes to bonds, and I don't know how many people understand that, but it's kind of a bizarre thing, because we, an entity, if you're, if you're part of that entity, you can't say yes, which is the dumbest thing I've ever seen in my life, but it is what it is. You know, just saying. Now, I want to, and I've, gosh, ladies and gentlemen, I've lived here for forty-two years, and most of that's been in the gray area. That's just the truth. And so, I want to thank Gary, and especially me and Val, who's our attorney, that watches me. I told her, I said, "You got to watch me like a bird dog, so you make sure I don't go over the edge, so that I'm doing everything possibly illegal," because I only have one interest in this bond, and I think everybody here probably knows that, anybody I've talked to in the hundreds and hundreds of conversations I've had the last several months, so that won't be any surprise to anybody. But the thing of it is, I want to tell you how professional the staff was in being diligent about, they followed the rules right up to absolute T. And I always push the buttons on things like that, because you know what? In order to get ahead, you've got to do that, and if you got to take a chance, and you got to take a stand, and you got to let people know what you think, and you got to tell it from the heart. And one of the things I told people, does this, does this have any effect on Bill Lambert? Absolutely not. It isn't the right thing to do? Absolutely, it is. So, tomorrow, May twenty-first, at the fairgrounds, from eight AM to eight PM, vote. Get off your duff and go vote. We need that. It's too important for our town. This is too important for all of us and our citizens. With that, Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
I would like to ask us all to have a moan of silence and wish our city supervisor a happy birthday.
Oh.
Explains the screw-ups with the agenda.
Well, as we get older, and I'm senior to you, so.
It starts to go. It starts to get bad.
Thank you for that. Just wanted to recount Public Service Recognition Week, had a lot of activities. Some of you came out to some of those activities. We had our award ceremony, our Champs Awards, and service awards for our employees. It was very well-attended, the best one that I've seen in a long time, the service appreciation barbecue that we had on Friday was the largest of any that I've been to since I've been here. So, that was a really nice deal, and they really appreciated, the employees really appreciated it. And I want to talk just a moment about something that didn't come up on the agenda tonight that was brought up at Public Works this last week, and that has to do with the separated bike lanes on Third Street. That will be coming forward to city council in the next week or two to decide about those separated bike lanes, and we will be also requesting some guidance regarding where the termination of the separated bike lanes will be. And Public Works authorized that issue, the recommendation from Transportation Commission to go back to Alta Engineering, to have them take a look at it and provide a recommendation as well. So, just wanted to make sure the public understands that that's moving forward, and the council will be requested to make some decisions on that in the next several weeks.
Well, with that, ladies and gentlemen, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, sir.
By Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
I thought these guys wanted, they don't want to listen to me talk about the bond again, so they, that was quick, I had two. And Jim did the first, and Gina did the second, all in favor of I? Suppose we're adjourned at seven forty-three. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.